Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, that doesn't sound right. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Bonkrick?
Here.
Benedetti?
Here.
Kimowen?
Present.
Cornback?
Here.
Perugia?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rezepa?
Here.
Quorm, present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the May 20th, 2024 meeting. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously still ordered, I will warn everyone to, I'll need you to put your hands up higher than normal this time around, just so I can see when we go around here. Just with the different table setup here. So next up, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we have reserved exclusively for items that are on the agenda today. We'll have another opportunity for all other public comment at the close of the meeting. To ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address, direct all comments through me, and please limit their comments to five minutes. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak, please use the raise hand feature under either Participants or Reactions, and we'll give you a minute to get queued up there if need be, but we'll go to those in person first, and then those on the Zooms. We'll open up public comment. Feel free to, yep, the podium's up there for frame of reference, folks, and microphone's sitting there as well, too.
Joshua Cade, I have a 2933 Riverside Drive, Michigan. I just wanted to speak on the application that I submitted. I wanted to get up here first and kind of answer any questions, maybe go over what I'm asking for and that. I thought, rather than try to like, ask for the whole summer, I just wanted to do this on like a trial basis. I think we asked for a few days in June. So essentially, what I've asked for is three Fridays in June in the Arc Fair. I think after I show that I'm a good neighbor, we can keep things at a fun time over there, make everybody happy, I think then I will come back and reapply for July, once we kind of figure out how to navigate through this. I definitely don't want to overpower the situation, I didn't want to bring a bunch of people here in support of it, although many people aren't supportive of it. I didn't think fighting was the way to go with this. I think compromise is what I'm after, and I think what I've asked for is absolutely a compromise, but that doesn't mean that's the end of the discussion one way or another. I want to keep the discussion open, I want to keep it moving forward, I want to keep, I mean, my phone number's on the application, if anybody in the neighborhood wants to grab it, they're more than welcome to. Just limit the prank phone calls, you know, not all at once. But I do, I do want to converse with people. I did talk to a few people in the neighborhood. I do think I made some progress, but I don't think the job is done, but I think what I'm asking for is a meet the middle type thing, and I hope everybody else feels that way. So like I said, three Fridays, plus the Arc Fair, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, done by nine o'clock, the stage has been moved to face my property. This doesn't mean I'm overpowering, I still want to continue negotiations, for lack of a better term, I guess, over there. I'm still willing to discuss anything with anybody in that area. My door is open, you guys have my phone number. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, okay? This isn't personal, this is just me trying to grow my business. And do something fun in the downtown area. I've been to many vacation towns where they have this sort of thing, and that's what I envisioned. Now, do they have neighbors on the other side of the alley? Probably not. Did I include that? No. I don't know everything, I make mistakes all the time, but I want to correct those mistakes. One mistake I made, Rivertown was hanging this, the sound barrier in the ceiling that I thought was fireproof, and quickly I found out that it wasn't. The fire chief called me, we discussed it, we took it down, right? So I want to move in that direction, I don't want it to look like, at the last council meeting, I was kind of like shocked by some of the stuff that was set. Grim Reaper, I think I was referred to, I didn't like that one very much. So that's not who I am, that's not what I do, and that's not what I bring to Trenton. I just opened a coffee shop today, 2360 West Jefferson, Renegade Coffee's open for business there. It's got a drive-through, we have smoothies, all sorts of things. So if you guys have an opinion one way or another, let's talk about it. This doesn't have to be a battle, it really doesn't. So I'm here to answer any questions you guys have, and anybody else, I guess.
Cool. Yeah, we got a couple minutes here still, if anyone from council has any questions for Josh directly here.
I do.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Hi, Josh, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Oh, microphone, thank you.
No, 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 keep it there.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
So were you able to reach out to any of our neighbors and speak with them?
I didn't discuss with some, I don't want to, some of them didn't want to, yeah, yes, I did.
Okay, so you were able to. And so I was reading through your application, and you also stated on there that it would be acoustic only, as requested by the neighbors in the last meeting, I believe.
Yes, it is acoustic in the sense it's not a full band, there will be some amplified sound. I think we will keep that in the ordinance, the levels of the ordinance, and it'll be done by nine o'clock, before we had asked for ten, we're going to attend, so we shorten the timeframe. It'll be, essentially, the people that we have inside now will be outside. If anybody's familiar with that, it's one or two people playing some songs. It's not a band, it's not a rock concert, it's not an arena, as it was referred to last night. It's a simple two-piece band, possibly three on a special occasion, but there's no drums, there's no big speakers lined up, there's small stuff at the end of the stage.
And you said that you had moved the stage, correct?
Yes, it was in the corner, which I believe that was almost aimed at a one person's house, where the sound was just traveling at his house, and I, I guess I didn't realize that. So we moved it so it's aimed directly at Rivertown, and we do have the canopies above that, in theory, should deaden some of the sound, I'm not saying it's going to, in theory it should, because it's a fabric, and it should stop bouncing. So that, the stage is directly across from Rivertown now, rather than angled towards the neighborhood.
And you have a permit for that stage?
A permit for the stage?
Are you, is he supposed to have a permit for that?
I believe, when we went to the planning commission originally, all of that was approved. And that, I'll get a permit, and I will, or we want to save it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman. And then, Councilwoman Bonkrick, if you have your hand up, too, I'll let you finish it.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, so you said you spoke with quite a few of your neighbors, and nobody had a problem with, you know, any type of noise. I see, the only noise that I'm worried about, too, with that area, is the amount of people that, you know, you're going to bring into that area, little area that you have. How many people are you anticipating?
So with it being a scaled-down thing, I think fifty to a hundred might maybe do it. Before we were planning on a larger show, it was like a fifty empty used type band, or another kind.
Oh, yeah.
So that's not happening anymore, so I don't think we'll get the numbers that I was hoping for. It'll be similar to what you've seen out there in the last month, I guess, with people in the patio, a few people in the courtyard, hopefully a few more people listening to the band, and then wrapping it up.
Wrapping it up at nine o'clock?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I just have concerns, because I've talked to some of your neighbors also, and there's still some of them that, they've never talked to you, and never even knew you were going to have, we thought you were going to have some type of a meeting, so everybody could kind of get on the same page, and that hasn't happened, according to a lot of your neighbors over there?
No, I, I talked to the people that I could talk to.
Okay.
I gave out my number to the people that wanted to stick around after the end of council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It's on the application, I am available to talk anytime.
Right.
I did go to talk to some of the people, some of them didn't want, the ones I identified as people that I talked to, I guess, but no, I didn't say nobody had a problem, but a lot of them still do have a problem with it.
Well, I, I hate to say this, because I'm kind of on the fence. I mean, I, I love the whole idea of the music and stuff going on downtown, I love the events, all these events are fabulous, but I just don't want to give our, the residents in that area, you know, something that they're not looking forward to. And I, I'm willing to go with you on a trial basis. I mean, I'm in business, too, in Trenton. I love, the more things that go on, the better it is for Trenton, the better it is for the downtown. All the people involved, I didn't even know you, but the people that are involved in that building and stuff are friends of mine. I mean, I consider Mark Angelotti a really good friend, and I, I love to see him successful, because he came and took a terrible-looking, dilapidated site, and put some excitement in it, and I'm excited about that. And as long as the residents down there don't have a problem with this loud music or whatever, and you can keep it to a level, I'm on board with you. You know, I, I think it's a great thing for Trenton, I'm not going to deny that, so...
I would agree, and I think that's why asking on a trial basis, I think, kind of lessens the blow, if you will. It's, like I said, the Arc Fair, let's pretend the Arc Fair week isn't in June.
Right.
It's three Fridays.
Right. No, I, you know, I, I see both sides of it, and I'm sure that, you know, people want to speak about it, and that's why we're here tonight, but, you know, anything that's good for Trenton and brings some excitement to Trenton, I love. I love the whole idea. All the different, the vintage market people, Christie McNally, all the people that are bringing great things to that downtown are so worthwhile for our community. And, you know, I praise this kind of stuff, and I just want to make sure it's kind of fair for all, that's all.
I totally agree.
Yep, that's, that's all I'd say.
All right. Does anyone else from council have any questions here? All right. Cool. Thank you very much, Josh, appreciate it.
Hey. Yes. Good evening. My name is Mike Chungin of 2932 Riverside Drive, Trenton. And I'm here tonight, yes, as council respectfully, to deny this permit. And Mr. Kane stated that you, that with some people, that one should understand. I don't, I don't personally, that went after the draft, it is permitted and filed, so there was no meeting, so it would sit down a meeting if you go. So this was not our, our field of office. Second thing, right now, we can't hear you. There's certainly been a host of violations, with zoning violations, that says, in essence, given that zone, you cannot have music outside, played outside of the building. Period. No matter what type, it says very clearly, this was issued in November, owner of the building as well as to the owners. So I don't know how you get around the city states and chain of parts, they were to move the stage and done, but discontinue any musical instruments or audio speakers. That's just not done, so I don't know how you give my disposal to any of that, unless they ask you, well, just skip over that and let me do the sending. Reference made to the site plan, I reviewed the site plan, I will be right now. Supposed to, this, and they do this use site plan, it says restaurant, you get compliance with B3, violation says you are not in compliance with that section, B3. Furthermore, on the site plan, if you look at the drawings on the second page, it shows the beer garden, they tell you certain things. They said they had some food trucks, community markets, so the like, there was never any mention that there would be an outdoor music arena, which is what they're asking, outdoor music arena. There was, there was no mention, and it shouldn't. That leads to the plea that, oh, just omit this and just figure it out, you know, put it in afterwards, without any permission, which is basically what's to done. Here the mayor council approved the site plan, the 22, early in 23, so it's where they got ice cream up on the stage, and I was using music, along with many, many complaints from the neighbors. So I, I don't know, I'm going to say, they were just going to kind of come in through the back door, whether they didn't ask for it in the first place, or it's easier to ask for, give us the permission in the first place. Also, this is just not a, another, the website, from the beginning to now, still I recognize that you can rent this beer garden, and have events up to 500 people with entertainers, so I suggest, all along, this was, this was in the plan, it just wasn't mentioned. I take it such into the idea that this is some sort of special event, special event, something that happens once a year. We've got our summer fest coming, Lobster Fest, sitting and scrolling through the one-time events. Last meeting, we did ask for basically seven, seven days, over six months, now we're chopping up, that's, that's not a special event. We take our lobster fest, which is a hundred and ten percent a day, showcase in restaurants in the area, businesses in the area, obviously our summer fest, you like it, but they're once a year, you're still going to have, you know, four, five, six, a lot, that's not in the area.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I think I apologize.
Thank you.
All right. I mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again, this city has never allowed an outdoor music arena, never, anything like this. And if you look at that property, that takes up, that stage and the seating takes up a good third of that, it's not like it's all just inside, I hear it, I hear it. So this has never been allowed before, again, we, the neighbors in this neighborhood, we were here first. We're not like the people that, you know, move next to their board, play on the noise, you know, we didn't move to the noise, we moved to the hubs. For these reasons, I respectfully ask you, if you deny this permit, again, I got any questions, I, you have to take them out, please, now that I hope you can hear me.
Thank you, Mr. Chungin. Anyone from council have any questions, follow-ups, or anything? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilwoman Bonkrick?
Just a question for the city, city. If, in fact, they wanted to go after a zoning variance, would they be able to go to the zoning board for a variance? Being that it was not a part of the original zoning that he's saying, would they have the ability to go to the zoning board to get a variance for a permit like this?
There, there are two avenues for which something like this could occur, either a special fence application that is before you, or a special use permit under, that would broaden the ability of them to use a property for a non-intended or a use that's not spelled out in the zone. But special, I'll just leave it at that.
This is, I think, more or less the way that they would go about that of having music in the district. It's the same with the other events where we allow for live music at, that it goes basically through this process.
And they haven't had live music, I was thinking about it, at the cultural center, when they'd have the bands come in and have concerts on the park at the cultural center, that's been done.
Correct.
So, I mean, there are other times in the city we've allowed, you know, small events, you know, not huge, but, you know, my, my whole feeling, too, on this is, where are people going to park? You know, unless they shuttle people in, or, I mean, where are people going to park, you know? That's, that might be some of their problem also. Just a concern.
Do you have anything else, Councilwoman?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chungin. All right.
I'm Robert Paulbeck, I live at 3332 Riverside Drive. As an attorney and as a resident in Trenton, I recognize it's your job as city council mayor to enforce the laws and ordinances for the city of Trenton. Our elder council mayors over the last century developed these ordinances to protect in a, with the exact type of problem that we are facing with Rivertown Tavern today. Every one of these ordinances that we created for the residents of Trenton has done so to ensure the high quality of life that we have here. My wife and aunt have built an outdoor addition to our home, so we lie on the enforcement of these ordinances so that I can make a reasonable decision as to whether or not to invest money in our home. We would not have made the investment in our home if the city of Trenton, if we knew the city and council were going to degrade the quality of our life by allowing unreasonable noise to penetrate our home. I agree with Mike in regards to the ordinance. That ordinance was right on the plans, the building plans. Mark Angelotti, as a contractor, knew that he had to get a variance in order to have outdoor music. He knew about the ordinance, he knew that B3, that the music had to be inside of a building. So he vaguely disregarded that, he didn't ask the council for, he didn't go to the planning commission, I mean, the building department to ask for a variance. He should, he knows he has to follow the rules, which he did not. And I feel that this council and mayor should back up Bill Billsman and the building department by requiring Rivertown Tavern to follow through and getting approved variance to the ordinance. A special permit event is an annual, one-time event, such as the Midsummer Festival, is not a private business to use to avoid confinement to the ordinances. There are three ordinances that we need to follow, be followed by Mark Angelotti, Rick DeSena, and Rivertown, Councilwoman Mayor, they are, ordinance of section 38, 166, prohibited acts, no person shall unreasonably make, continue or cause to make, or continue any noise disturbance. That states, no loudspeakers or amplifier, musical instruments can create a noise disturbance across a real property boundary. Section 38, 162, whereas excessive sound is serious hazard to the public health, the welfare, safety, and the quality of life, whereas the substantial body of science and technology exists by which excessive sound may be substantially abated, and whereas the people have a right to and should be insured in an environment free from excessive sound that may jeopardize their health, or welfare, or safety, or degrade their quality of life. Therefore, is it as the policy of the city to prevent excessive sound which may jeopardize the health and welfare or safety of the citizens, or degrade the quality of life? It was really clear from all the residents that spoke last week, that the excessive sound was degrading their quality of life, they indicating that their health, their children could not sleep, and sleep is critical. It seemed the residents could not escape the sound, causing emotional hardship, leaving them to feel helpless, angry and stressed, anxiety, causing a level of blood, high blood pressure. These are all medical issues that are jeopardizing the health and welfare of our residents. On day six, you can heard all these residents talking about decreasing the quality of their life. Another thing, too, is section 38, 191, motor vehicle noise is like, or is a very enlightened ordinance, because it defines noise as. Noise means any sound which annoys or disturbs humans, or which causes or tends to cause adverse psychological or physiological effect on humans. Noise means any sound which annoys or disturbs a reasonable person of normal sensitivities. On day six, all the citizens spoke, are reasonable persons of normal sensitivities. They came advice to you on how the sound was ruining their lives and damaged their physical and psychological health. Therefore, the council must enforce its own ordinances, or it will make a mockery out of this rule of law. The forefathers of this city were very insightful or wise in making these ordinances, because they wanted to avoid the fears that we are presenting today. Since the footprints were drawn up, professionals not being upheld by Mark Angelotti, Rick DeSena, Rivertown, because they're constantly trying to work around the ordinances already put in place. Here's another example we're concerned about, is what Rivertown did in their advertising.
If you could wrap up your thought, Mr. Paulbeck?
Sure. Finally, we, so many of us are fighting to uphold the city of Trenton's written ordinances, as well as fighting for the quality of our lives, and we see Rivertown Tavern is only here today for a one-month permit. It's clear from the council, the last meeting, that they want to go to October 2024. And we, the fact that they didn't come to us or talk to us about this, is just not showing good faith. This adds to, it's degrading our quality of life, and if we have to constantly show up for every council meeting for the rest of the year to save our quality of our town, that's not healthy for us either. So I wish that you denied our permit and follow the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yep.
Hi. My name is Kim Chungin, I live at 932 Riverside Drive. I would like to express my profound disappointment with Mr. Kane, whom we had based his meeting in this with the understanding of the council resolution, that Mr. Kane would have to take the neighbors to discuss a compromise. We were all ready, we had some ideas. Instead, after he wrote the consent request, he met with one neighbor. I know he's saying he met with others, but if you met with them, raise your hand, because I know of one person. Out of the close to two dozen neighbors, that's what he chose to do, one person. So here we all are again. How is that being a good neighbor to us? As far as I can tell, nothing has changed since the day six meeting, except the neighbors have enjoyed peace, quiet. Thank you.
Hello, Rick DeSena, 166 Oak Street. You good over there? This is all my fault. This probably been about like, I think I called even Bob Howie, he was over there, I probably called Bob Howie probably about like six, seven years ago, because I just looked at, I looked at downtown Trenton as like an opportunity, you know, and there's certainly, this is the risk, this is the risk that, that I took, and then my uncle Les and Josh, and got them roped into it, is when, when you take a risk like we did and go into a downtown that maybe, it is, it's quiet down, it's, you know, it's, it's quiet, it's quiet in the neighborhood, and we definitely, clearly woke up the neighbors from, from that standpoint. And, but I've been looking to downtown Trenton for, for eight or so years, and Mark even, Mark even knew that, and as soon as Mark called me with the opportunity, it was 100% yes. Obviously, we have businesses and wind-up and stuff like that and everything, and it's just saturated, there's so many, it's, it's crazy. I didn't know how to, as far as I didn't realize, there was an attorney and a judge in, in the neighborhood, but we obviously, obviously, I think from what Josh's words, we certainly try and be, try and be very respectful, but I just don't want to, because Josh has to come to these meetings, and, you know, so, thank you, Josh. But we're not also just, 50% of the ownership of Rivertown, you know, owns your, not owns, but has an agreement with the, with the ice rink, that runs the, that runs the, I think it's important to add, that runs the restaurant upstairs, which had, which, which had nothing but turnover. I think, and now we've, I think if even Mr. Beaker... I think, and now we've, I think if even Mr. Beaker would speak to it, we're going on our third year there. We've even, we even purchased a, we made an initial investment to open up Typhus with Glass, it was seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars. And basing that on just like a blind faith, one-year agreement, right? Because it was all in front of, in front of you. And then we spent sixty-five thousand bucks on a liquor license for, liquor license for up there. So we're kind of, we're vested, we're not just vested in Rivertown. You know, like Josh mentioned, he just opened up a coffee shop and the investment in Rivertown was so much bigger than, Mark will tell you, so much bigger for him and so much bigger for us. So the laws, the ordinances, you know, obviously we need to abide by, but I think the biggest question is, you know, what do you want here downtown? You know, what's reasonable? Is it zero? Is it a hundred? You know, it's kind of finding, you know, as far as finding happy medium, so. I just wanted to introduce myself, I got my name set up a couple times. So, you know, we're, we're here to say no matter what. It's a very successful business. I think even the police would speak to us, we have an excellent crowd. We literally, ninety percent of our business is even done before midnight. If you, between the, between the hours of twelve and two AM, it is literally like maybe like five percent, it's, everybody, everybody is inside and it wraps up. So, you know, I think you have a good, a good business and I guess when progress kind of comes to you, it's not an easy, it's not an easy decision. And I think like, like Josh said, like the compromise in the short term and kind of give us an opportunity to kind of be a good neighbor and, you know, what is the right answer, so. That's all, I just kind of wanted to speak and introduce myself, so, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for me?
Any quick questions from council? All right, it's in. Thank you very much, Mr. Sam.
Matt Lajness, twenty-nine thirty-one Third Street. So for me, like I was here last month, you guys heard me, I spoke my piece. So there's a couple things for me that I look at right now. We, for me, I see the very obvious dealing with the ordinance. Like that, that's something, that's like the biggest hurdle for me right now that has to be done. How, when, what that looks like is dependent on you. What I can tell you is there must have been a come-to-Jesus meeting. Just, just so everybody knows, Josh did stop by my house and talk to me. We've conversed back and forth and he let me know about applying where the changes were made. I know for, for a lot of the neighbors, like the, you know, if that opportunity wasn't given to them and they didn't get to speak to what they thought they had to speak to. But Josh did with me and I really appreciated the fact that he was willing to daytime stop and we talked back and forth. And so when I look at the application now, even though there may not have been the meeting that a lot of us had thought there might be, I do feel like the application represents listening to a lot of the things that was said last month.
There you go.
And what I can tell you is that something hadn't been done after last month's meeting because it's been a month where I haven't heard anything. Some of you have, I get it, I get it. I'm not as close as you guys, I'm still on the backside of the alley. And so each of us are going to have different experiences with what this, what this will collect and what has happened. I always want to be known as a bridge builder. And so I look at the application and I see where there was compromise made on Rivertown's part. And even though there wasn't the conversation, I do feel that it was listened to. So again, we got, we got the big thing with the ordinance, that's got to be, that's got to be crossed off first. But if they want to be a good neighbor, and I do feel like the intentions are good here, I've got to give them a chance to at least be able to show themselves. And, you know, for who they really are, what they really want to do to the community. It's their business, I don't care about income levels, I don't care how much money you're making, how successful you are, I do care about how good of a neighbor you're going to be to us. That is the most important thing for me. And the past month, you guys have been great neighbors, you know? I only had to kick like two people out of my backyard for painting on my fence. So maybe we should figure that out. As far as the parking goes, the alley is a nightmare behind my house. That's not your fault, I, you know, but it is what it is. The parking, you referenced the parking, where are all these people going to park? They're going to park in front of my house. And Third Street south of us is permit parking. Might be something to look at for us, because it gets wild. When the night is busy, when the parking lot's full, when the alley's full. Now the, the other parking lot that used to be the pharmacy there, they've closed that parking lot off. And so it's just constant. That is something, that is a concern for me, but as far as the permit goes, I like what I see and I like what I heard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lajness.
Got it. All right. My name is Jeremy Soraki, I live at one seven eight four five Park Lane in Groceal. I also live at Toronto, Mamacita's, Rocky's Roadhouse, so I have a big investment in this community. And I'm here, obviously I'm a neighbor of Josh's, I sell all the food through the window, so we're kind of getting this together. And, you know, I said it last time I was here, we were talking about a new events place across from Toronto on the corner and you guys approved that. And I said that night, I said, congratulations, Trenton, that you actually have problems, right? Growing problems. And I think that's the greatest thing that we have, right? I think that, first of all, Mark Angelotti's got nothing to do with it, he's a landlord, right? He doesn't make any decisions, he doesn't do anything except rent this space, so let's take him right off the board, okay? Whatever we do inside our businesses has nothing to do with Mark, he leased the space and we leased the space from him and what we do from there is our responsibility, not his, so. Let's start with that, but I think, you know, Josh has really tried to accommodate nine o'clock. First of all, we don't know what the ordinances are, I don't know what ordinance in the city, okay? I do whatever I gotta do it, Toronto in the center of the city, I do whatever I want in Rockies, I do whatever I want in Mamacita's. And I don't know what the ordinances are, so obviously we've got some growing things, we've got to learn what the ordinances are, we're upsetting some people. But it's great things, you're in the DDA, you're in the Downtown Development Authority area. This is what they do in downtowns, I hate to break it to people, even though you've had a very quiet, desolate downtown, it's booming, it's growing. The average median home price went in two thousand twenty-one from a hundred ninety-nine to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand in three years, okay? Inflation, maybe, I think it's because we're booming, I think there's a lot of stuff to do at Trenton. Because when I came here, it was a ghost town after nine o'clock, there was nothing to do. I left Groceal, I drove around the corner and I went to a different city, okay? That's what I did every night when I left Groceal. There was nothing to do, now we got stuff to do, there's nothing wrong with that. Do we have to keep it under control? Yes. Should we have events? Yes. Why wouldn't we have events? Why wouldn't we do fun things in this city? Don't we want Trenton to be fun? Do we want it to be what we want it to be? I think, because I helped develop it, I want it to be fun. I want you all to have a place to go eat, I want you to go have a bar, go have a drink. I want you guys to do whatever you want, enjoy the music. Nine o'clock, I mean, the Harleys are driving through this town all night long till at least nine o'clock, so you ain't sleeping. I guarantee you ain't sleeping, okay? So, anyway, that's my two cents. I think Josh is doing a great job, I'm going to be the partner over there, I think they have a growing business. We all invested, trust me, millions, I'm at quarter, million and a half, two million dollars between all of us, maybe more. I mean, we invested in this city. We invested in the future of this city. I've invested millions and millions of dollars in this city, trust me, and I believe in this city. And I'm not going to stop coming to these meetings and showing my support, I'm not the one on the chocolate block today, so, that's good. But I believe in the city, I believe in growth. Our neighbors up the street in Wyandotte have a booming, booming, booming thing going. Their prices are way up, everything's going good, and they don't even have Elizabeth Park, we have the most special park of any area downriver. Who else has Elizabeth Park? We should be doing fun stuff, we should be like figuring out how to make this a great destination. We have the bicycles coming through town, we have the River Walk, we have a new bird sanctuary across from Rockies. That's the important stuff, we have growth and we have opportunity for other businesses to come down here. You can't buy, they couldn't get away Toronto when I bought it. And now you can't buy anything on this street anywhere. So, that's my two cents, congratulations, Josh. I appreciate you and I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Hi. Can I pray to you, Mary? Carla Chrysler, two nine three three West Jefferson. Yes, I heard a lot of good things on both sides. I want to say as a neighbor, almost directly across the street from Riverside, that in this last month, what I've seen going over there is a thriving business. It's awesome, we're all for it. The streets are packed, there's nowhere to park, it's full house. And I see people doing outdoor activities, I see games going on out there. I see a lot of healthy thriving going on there, it's awesome. Why does it have to be amplified music? I know Josh is saying, okay, we're gonna keep it down, it's not going to be big speakers, it's going to be this, it's going to be that. I don't want this to be a war either. Nobody wants to be coming back and saying, he did this now this month. You know, they're trying to grow a business, it's awesome. Everything everybody said about Trenton is so true. We've lived here for twenty-plus years and we've seen it come alive. I'm a big, I thrive with the stores downtown. I shop the stores, I support the stores, I talk up the stores. I love the park, I love that they're here, it's so cool. And Mamacita's is one of my favorite places. We're not downers, we're not trying to drag this down. It needs to stay a family town and it can stay a family town. It does not have to be the music thing outside. That's all we're asking for. And if he really wants to argue that point, I know you're not trying to argue, Josh, that's the wrong word, but if he wants to negotiate that thought, then please do set up a meeting with all of the neighbors. We're all good people, I know all my neighbors, it's exceptional. These guys are awesome. Nobody's old grumpy old men that don't want anything fun happening in the neighborhood, not at all. You know, now, this gentleman brought up the issue of the traffic at night and it gets to be kind of wild. Well, you know what, you guys, honestly and truly, our doorstep is not far from Jefferson, from the street side and it scares me a little bit. You know, is someone going to be souped up and they're gonna, you know, what are they gonna do? You know, is my chair going to piss from my front porch or is my, it's packed, it's packed up and down. I'm even okay with that, the parking up and down the street. But how much more thriving can you be? It's thriving. You know, and you guys, good for you, you know? But leave it at that. Stop trying to run us over. If you really want, if you really care about what we think, then meet with us, because that did not happen, that was totally skipped. Nobody, nobody got a call to get the neighbors together. I was looking forward to that because myself, I was ready to talk about who's to go outside. I believe in, he needs the opportunity to grow his business. I like that they have the tents outside and stuff. But some of them weren't even up for that. But I don't know, when he sat down and talked with us, maybe we could, you know, agree on something. But we were disrespected and ignored is what we were. So it's really too bad, but please think about this, thank you.
Just for clarification too, Mr. Russell, the application they submitted is for acoustic only? So it's no amplification? The application in front of us is for acoustic only?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what we're approving here is for acoustic only, is what is in front of us, so.
Yeah, but I still, I still think with all due respect, he skipped over meeting with us.
Oh, and that's, yeah, that's, I just wanted to make that.
So he didn't do what you guys asked last time. He disregarded that and to us, that's nothing but disrespect. I mean, we would have not with him as decent people, give us a chance, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jim Boomer, I live at the twenty-nine sixty-one West Jefferson, directly across the street from Riverside. And the thing that concerns me about this application that he's applying for is the term acoustic. Because if that's what you're referencing, you've been doing it the last couple of weeks, the last couple of weekends. It's not acoustic, there are microphone, there are, it's a piano or something. And I still hear in my house at night, I wind up in clothes, I tell them, I'm pretty light, but still I can hear the music. And one of the worst things that has happened since the last meeting, oh my, and who goes to that? He did come over one day to speak with me and I was out, I was out the apartment, we'll tell you. And I went across the street next day and told the parts, I knew who I was and why I was there to say, and left the message, said I'd be home all weekend, great, I haven't come over, I'd like to talk to him, never saw him, never heard from him. So he did try one, given that. But what's really become an issue, and I had to do again this weekend. But their past history is what scares me. They say they do certain things and then it's amplified or it's not done a ton of the time. Or what's become a real problem is the, I guess, the radio, is that either? That's eleven thirty, I call at twelve thirty at night, I'm going to call the police, I said I can hear boom, boom, boom inside my bedroom at twelve thirty at night. It's, it's the same issue. So I guess I'm opposed at this time towards these events, as he calls them, that he wants to have. I, I too would like to sit down as a group. We stand as a group, we're neighbors, don't talk to us more than a time. If we weren't happy to make ourselves available, we can, we'll come to a meeting, we'll sit down and we'll talk about these things. Based on the number of people, and I agree with Carla, the place is packed mostly. And he's doing a really good business, I have no issues with that. The problem I have is the noise, that's always there. And if he does just acoustical music, you're not even twenty feet near this guy. So it's going to have to amplify somehow, and that's the problem. At that point, it becomes too loud. I don't know if they don't understand the volume control, I don't know if they're not aware, I'm sure where the threshold limits the city has because we've talked about it repeatedly. Sat on my porch last Saturday night and several times they were above seventy. Mostly in the low sixties, but above seventy, again, you are above the level allowed by the city. But based on past history, until he meets with us and we talk about what will work for all of us, I feel we should turn down this request and ask him to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boomer. We'll, I mean, we'll wait till, yeah, so if there's questions from council, we can wait to, we'll wait certainly so everyone can go first at least.
Hello, John. Your business plan was great.
Could you start with your name and address?
Michelle Guiney, thirty-four oh nine Elizabeth Drive, Trenton. Your original business plan was great and everybody okayed it and it came through. And it came through as something else. Your ideas, I respect. I know what you're talking about, places up north. You just picked the wrong place. It's, it's too small of an area where we live. We have a precedent of not having outdoor music here. I'm not quite sure why we have to be the people to change the precedent. What's next? Chicago having music? The Roundhouse having music? It's a quiet town. Thank you. It's a quiet town. And the things that we do have going on here, the International Wildlife, the Bike Trail, canoeing, paddle boarding, Elizabeth Park, our little street bears that are just charming. This, these things are quiet things. And I don't know why we're back here discussing this. I really don't. All of us here, Josh, should be sitting at the tavern, eating food with our neighbors, with each other, bringing our friends over to the tavern and going, this is our tavern. We love it. It's gorgeous. It's only the noise level. And for us to be here, for people who don't live right where we live, if you can imagine a car stereo blasting in front of your house for four hours, that's where it was last summer. And it did not stop, even though we requested it. So you're probably thinking we're making a big thing of this. We are not. It was over the top. I'm a hearing preservation specialist, certified. And Mr. Paulback explained all the damages from hearing that can happen. The stress level was so high downtown in our neighborhood from that, that I think that needs to be understood. And you said you bought a decibel reader. So your employees need to be trained on that. If you're not gonna be there tonight, someone has to be more in charge. Because when you're not there, the decibels go up. So right now, I would hope we would deny that until we can figure out if we want to actually be the ones to break precedent or not. Which I'm, you know, I just, I'm not ready for that. I am ready to go to the restaurant and eat. I'm ready to play games out there. I'm ready to listen to music inside the restaurant. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gagne. Any other comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Brothers. I just moved here about four years ago, give or take. And I live at 80 West Road, Trenton. For those of you that don't know where that is, I'm the last house before you fall in the river, on the left. So I'm gonna address just a couple of things. I moved from Ann Arbor because Trenton is the up and coming place. I hate to say it to some of my neighbors, but development's gonna happen here. It's gonna happen. It's ripe for investments. It's ripe for taxes for some of these investments. And if businesses have to continue to come to these meetings to ask for variances, to ask for this, to ask for that, and I understand I'm getting in this late in the program, but as a business owner myself, pretty soon businesses won't come. And yeah, you'll have your quiet sleepy little town, and that's what you'll have. What I'm here tonight is that Josh asked for two nights plus art fair. Well, art fair to me is a no-brainer because I live at 80 West Road. And you want to talk about being inconvenienced, as the officers here will attest to. Everybody parks in my house. Everybody turns around my driveway and I get several people knocking on the door to use my restroom. So inconvenience is part of the growing pains of developing something. I'm sure when they started art fair, there was a lot of commotion and people that were against art fair. Because I'll be truthful with you, art fair inconvenience is me. I could go away with art fair, it wouldn't bother me in the least bit. So as inconvenient as we're asking people to be, it is gonna happen in Trenton. There's gonna be new businesses coming in here up and down the street. And I get it's a problem with the noise. I understand. I get where you're coming from. But what I believe, as the lawyer pointed out, there's ordinances. Ordinances can be changed. What better way to find out if you as the council want to change the ordinance to allow Josh to do two nights, four hours? He's asking for eight hours. Eight hours of your time as neighbors, residents, council, police, fire department, to give it an eight-hour trial. That's what he's asking. I know there's precedents that you said, that you brought up, that there's precedents in what's already been done. And you're afraid it's gonna happen again. As you said, and rightfully so. But what I'm saying is, he's asking you for eight hours. The art fair to me is a no-brainer. If you don't allow him to do music, the art fair, shame on you. The art fair is a nuisance to everybody. It just is, if you live around here. So what I'm seeing him hearing is, he's asking for eight hours this month to prove what he says he's gonna do. If he doesn't, it's gonna take one more meeting. And I suggest at that meeting, maybe our officers speak to the two nights that he's having this. The fire department speaks at it. City council shows up. Maybe listens for an hour or two and see where it goes from there. But I moved here because I want to see Trenton become that town. There's nothing other than being able to walk out your door and go to a little, little music in the park type event and or restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brothers. Anyone else for public comment?
Okay. My name is Mark Angelotti. I live at 2933 Riverside Drive. Although I wear many hats, I'll speak first as the chairperson of the Trenton DDA. Many residents may not know that a certain number of their tax dollars are directed to the DDA. The DDA is a governmental unit that takes those tax dollars and uses them to create a vibrant downtown experience. Our projects are many, but now is not the time. My point is simple. Every taxpayer in the city pays to have a more active, vibrant, and attractive downtown district. One, two, or three no vote to this permit application will send a clear message to the DDA board, to the current downtown business owners, and any potential developer who's considering investing their money in Trenton. Putting on my investor developer hat, I'm here to support my tenant. Since opening their business, I've received hundreds of thank yous from the citizens of Trenton, many who are here today. And I would like to say thank you back to those people here in support. Your support allows my tenants to pay the rent and the property taxes that have nearly doubled because of this investment. On behalf of my tenants, I also want to thank you for taking the time tonight to come and show your support. My tenants have shown a willingness to work with all stakeholders within the ordinances while giving you, their customers, the service they asked for. And I suspect if there was a few more people that were at the meeting last time were here tonight, that you would hear that Josh knocked on a few other doors, or maybe some doors of the people who are here tonight who said no. So I have heard multiple times from multiple people that the, that the group has said zero. That's what they're willing to negotiate. I've heard it from multiple people, they're willing to negotiate to zero. So as long as Josh starts at zero, they're willing to negotiate. Not sure that's in good faith. Speaking with the surrounding building and business owners, it is no surprise that this development has driven up the value of both residential and commercial real estate. In addition to my two commercial tenants, I'm fortunate to have two rented, to have both apartments above Rivertown rented at fair rent that enjoy an active downtown area. Any claim that this development has reduced property values is inaccurate. Now, I'll put my neighbor hat on. When I received word that these gentlemen last week were in front of council using my name, I went back and listened to council minutes. Needless to say, I was disappointed. They all know that I'm a landlord. But I did, I did have to giggle at Mr. Doocy taking a swipe at my ethnicity with the Kiss the Ring comment. Until it struck me that that was in fact taking a swipe at the city council. The staff, the people who worked so hard to bring this town to what it is, much like Josh stood up and set the record straight about me last time, I'd like to set the record straight about the city council to commission any employees. Under those circumstances, did anyone bend any rules, laws, or ordinance to make this development possible? The city offered no financial assistance, tax deferrals, and none were requested. We all understood that our actions would be, would have to withstand the scrutiny of our citizens. Any accusation of impropriety has no merit or basis in fact. These accusations are designed to throw out and thrown out in an effort to put you all on your heels and take your eye off the ball. As a chair of the DDA, a developer, a taxpayer, and a neighbor, I ask that each one of you on the council consider all of the citizens in Trenton, where we put our tax dollars and what our tax dollars are designed for. I urge you to vote yes on this application. Thank you.
Just in time, thank you, Mr. Angelotti. Any further public comment? We'll check out, go ahead.
My name is Christine McNally. I reside at 3326 John R. Street. I own commercial property at 2723 West Jefferson, as well as own a business there. And I also own the DDA. What I see here and what I've seen since I opened my business is growing pains. It seems to me that's what a lot of this is and other issues that have been brought before council about applications, we're growing. Downtown is a great place to be. There's a ton of other businesses that want to come down here. I will tell you that there's a ton of businesses that are also really scared to come down here just because of things exactly like this. We, as business owners in downtown Trenton, have put our blood, sweat, tears, and money into trying to make our businesses successful. We're not millionaires. You know, business is okay. We do great. We love our neighbors. I have customers that I see in here that are neighbors in the neighborhood. We want to be a downtown town. When I decided on a whim that I was gonna do this wild thing and open, I opened some clothing boutique, the only place I wanted to be was in downtown town. If I couldn't find a spot down there, I wasn't gonna do it. My grandfather's dental office was on West Jefferson in the 50s. So it's kind of neat that I'm a couple blocks down from where he was way back then. I just hope that the city takes this opportunity to show other business owners and all the residents that you support growth in downtown Trenton. There's so many good things coming that I don't think everyone even knows that's coming. And to prohibit an up and coming business to grow and do more great things, like it was spoken about before, a couple hours, a couple Fridays a month, I don't think that's a huge ask. I live not too far from Rivertown. My business is not too far from Rivertown. We have customers that walk to and from Rivertown to my boutique. It brings people downtown. It helps our property values. It boosts all businesses in the downtown area. And I think growth is all about compromise. And I think what Josh is asking for tonight is a completely reasonable compromise.
Thank you, Ms. McNally. Any other public comment? One more here.
Patrick Koopa, 3361 Elizabeth. You know, Mr. Angel is sounding like he's the head of the DDA. He should be accusing himself on any decisions that he has any financial interest in whatsoever in turning over the reins to somebody else. There's no, there's no reason he should be a person of authority in having a vested interest in that. That's wrong. Wants somebody on the council to hear you. The decibel level. It has been pretty good this last month. However, I've noticed the speed going down, up and down the street, I'm talking about Elizabeth Drive, has been insane. I was driving, talking to two neighbors the other day about 8 o'clock at night. Cars are just ripping down Elizabeth Drive. I mean, some of them, I bet you they were going fifty. I've seen one car pull one, and I can see the police department from my front porch. I mean, it's insane, the additional traffic that's coming down here. And how good the music, that late at night. I mean, if somebody's gonna do something about that, there's no question about that.
Thank you, Mr. Koopa.
Hello. Mr. Doocy, 3409 Elizabeth Drive, Trenton. A lot of misinformation's been spoken up here. Maybe everything's been assembled on a table and written down, hopefully with most of the intake of much of what's been said of this disinformation presented. The decibel level has been so improved in the last month. And thank you for that. And thank you. But I don't see a change in the amount of traffic or the amount of people. I don't sit in front of there, or I do drive by there at least several times a night. And it seems like the business is doing quite well. No change that I could see. The beer garden that is referenced previously still has people out there. But that's always, I mean, less than a dozen that I've ever seen, even when he had his live band on stage. Because it was too loud for the people to sit there. Again, the people I talked to were up against the wall. Outside, but on the patio. But I don't, I don't get why, when we have a noise ordinance and we have other ordinances that are in effect, that they can be blatantly disregarded and just move on. Let's take it from this point, let's forget about what's gone on for the past year. I mean, that's past precedent has been set by this organization this far. It's, there's nobody I've talked to that lives downtown in the surrounding neighborhood that is opposed to a business, a restaurant. Mama's Cetus, nobody's having any problems there. I don't get why the tavern has to have the decibel level at the level that they have it at. It's too loud for people, there's three people I've talked to that's not a good measuring stick. I understand that. Then say they, they ask for the music to be, the noise to be turned down. Sometimes it's not music. All due respect. But they were told by the manager at the time that they can't turn it down. And, you know, that was with a, that wasn't a live band music. That was a few blocks of all the reference they asked for, whatever live canned music. I'll follow it. Acoustic music can be heard. It's a small place. It's a small facility on the inside. But as far as I know, it hasn't even been tried before. Because it's always been amplified. That's not by definition acoustic music. We discussed this a month ago. And the city administrator said, you know, you have to keep it inside walls. And there's no amplification. And yet, before you, is a petition, whatever, I'm sorry for the right word, but a request to have a variance. I, I just don't get it. There was no attempt, as far as I know, to meeting with anybody on Elizabeth Drive. If he knocked on any doors, I did not. Did talk to my neighbors. If you knocked on any doors, I did not. Did talk to my neighbors, and nobody was aware of this gentleman or anybody else trying to discuss, we're getting a group together. Rumor, I lived across the street from one. I talked to Jim. He had one. He did go across the street. That was a golden opportunity. All he had to say was, pick a date, Jim, where we can all get together and make a talk. That didn't happen. He had that opportunity. He could have done that in hindsight, but that didn't happen. It begs to question that how sincere is this person or this group of people that's running this bar? It doesn't seem as though they are. It's almost as though, it seems to us that, you know, there is nothing to negotiate. We're going to have our way, and you're going to get out of the way. It's a business district, and we should be able to do what we want. And disregard that nonsense about the ordinances, because that doesn't affect us, because we've been doing this for a year. And disregard that what happened last month when the police department said, oh, we have more complaints about the noise coming from your establishment than any other establishment in the whole Flippin City. And that twice as many.
Mr. Bucy, do you want to wrap up, too?
I understand, sir. I urge you to not to approve this, please. He has not shown, just by the application, the way he's worded, does not show that he is wanting to work with anybody except what he has claimed.
Thank you, Mr. Bucy. Any other public comment?
Hello. My name is Matt Chrysler. I live at 2933 West Jefferson, ground zero. I want to start with, we had an entire summer last year totally pulverized. Nobody ever did anything about it. Come to find out, there was never even a permit for any of it. What happened there? How did that ever happen? I never got an answer last time we were at the meeting, and I'm asking again. So what that tells me is that everything is a lie, because you got away with it for six months last year with no permit. And it was bad last year. Now, on the bright side, Friday night, the place was packed. The whole beer garden was packed. There was no band playing on the stage. The place was making money hand over fist. Now, I can't speak for Jim, because he's a couple houses down from me, but the noise at my place was unbearable. It was okay. Now, again, I wasn't in his front yard, but I heard people say that we're trying to drive business out of Trenton. You don't live in my house, okay? But whatever was going on on Friday was making an enormous amount of money. The place was packed till midnight, or half midnight, and, I mean, it was happening. And it was happening under control. You know, so all we're trying to do is get the noise level down on the bands. And, you know, when you say acoustic, again, acoustic, a person on an acoustic guitar singing is going to, you know, if you're talking about putting an amplifier up in a PA, then you're right back into rock music. I mean, if the music can be moved inside permanently, and, I mean, I can understand. We never did get a chance to talk, okay? I mean, Matt, you've got a chance. I don't know anybody else that had an opportunity. But, you know, there is a way to make this happen, to make it work. And again, I mean, Friday night, the place was, I don't think I've ever seen it as packed as it was Friday night. It was packed. There was standing room only in the beer garden. And I didn't go in the bar, so I can't speak, but from where I was standing, it was packed. It was making money. People were there. It was happening. And there was no band playing.
Thank you, sir. Right. Any other public comment? Let's see if there's anyone on the Zoom. Seeing no hands there, we'll close out public comment and move to the next agenda item. First thing we have this evening, bid opening. I'd request this body is someone to make a motion here to allow the city clerk to open proposals received for Rotary Park Waterfront Park Improvements Bid Package 1 from the scheduled bid opening of Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. We've got moved and supported for the bid opening. Madam Clerk, describe.
All right. So this is a bid opening that is for Rotary Park Waterfront and Park Improvements. A few of the bids were received by our office, and the bid opening is scheduled for Tuesday, April 23rd. And we only received two bids. The first one is from Campo Brothers. It's for $692,970.
Sure. First bid was from Campo Brothers. The amount was $692,970.
We have a bid bond included.
A bid bond is included.
The second bid is from Gibraltar Construction Company.
Your time's up.
This one, bid bond is included. And it is for $835,000.
Bid bond is included, and the total is $835,000. If we could also get a motion to refer these proposals to the Parks and Rec Department for their review and recommendation. Some moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Next, under General, we've got three items here. First up, I will defer to our 33rd District Court delegate, Councilwoman Bunkrux, for her fines, costs, and fees from April 2024.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the fines, costs, and fees for April 2024 from the 33rd District Court in the amount of $11,091.27 due to our city.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk, I'll let you take these next two items here under General. First up here, Rivertown Tavern Outdoor Area Entertainment.
Okay, so Rivertown Tavern is asking council's permission to have outdoor entertainment. This would be on June 14th, 21st, and 28th through 30th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Some moved.
Support.
Motion and support to approve the application. Do we have any further discussion? Councilman Pruege, can I make comments of the public comment?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, what I found to be somewhat disappointing potentially was that if in fact Josh didn't meet with all the neighbors, I was disappointed. Also, what I was disappointed was the neighbors, they came up and they made points of what they didn't like or don't want to happen, but not a single one said what they would accept. They didn't come up with an idea. They didn't say what they would accept. And that, you know, so that is frustrating. So with that being said, I'm not going to orchestrate the meeting, but the meeting between those two parties, I'd be glad to sit in on. So it's up to you folks to get together. I'm not going to, I'm not going to be able to hold these people. So I think it's proper that people should sit together and talk, and I will be part of that process. And just let me know when it is, and I'll be there. And that's all I have to say.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kevlin.
Yeah, Mayor, just for clarification, the permit on hand is for no amplification. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, I'll read the event details here. It says, relaxed party environment, lawn games, live music only from 5:00 to 9:00. Acoustic only. No full bands, except Street Fair Weekend or our fair weekend. It's listed.
Thank you.
Did you have the, sorry, okay.
I think the definition of acoustic is, there are two different definitions. One, acoustic, you can plug in your guitar and have a microphone. That is acoustic music as well. Other acoustic music, it has no amplification at all. It's both acoustic. So I think that no one is trying to be disingenuous here, Quincy. But I think there are two different working definitions, and maybe that needs to be clarified.
Gotcha. No, thank you. That's a good point. Councilman Benedetti.
Yes, thank you. One of the things, too, that were brought up, so the public comments were made, both sides, great to hear that. We like to hear that. A lot of good, positive comments about what people think we're doing here in the city. And I know some think we're not doing the right thing with this. But he asked, like someone said, eight hours. Street Fair Weekend, the gentleman talked correctly. There's a lot of people that really would like to see the Street Fair not be there, but they know it draws businesses. They know it brings people in. It brings people in to look at houses in this town. It makes it what we are. So we need to give him a chance. And yes, we all owe the residents the due diligence to show up down there on those two weekends. And yes, we need to talk to him if it's a problem. And like Councilman Pruege said, look, we can't set the meeting up for you because then it's a city function. But we'll be more than happy to sit in the audience and listen to everybody. It'd be the opposite of this. Did I talk to Josh? Yes. I told him there needs to be changes. I think he's made some good changes. 9:00, I got neighbors that play their radios till 9:00. Kids play in the street till 9:00. It's just there. It's summer. School's out or going to be out. We got to give him a chance. If it doesn't work, then yes. As far as violating an ordinance, that's something that we have to have our administration. The gentleman sits down and writes. That's his job to look into for us. He will tell us if it's taken care of or not, or if it's a violation. But it's a special ordinance. It allows him to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Just to piggyback off that, yes, this doesn't change the noise ordinance that we have on the books already. That still can and should be enforced, and any violation certainly can be called on. Councilwoman Rodriguez, oh, sorry, and then Councilwoman Bunkrux.
Yes, I know some of you are disappointed, but, you know, Josh did exactly what I had asked him to do in regards to the time. We need to give him a chance, okay? That's all that I'm asking you to do. I still want you all to meet, okay? There is a way to sit down and compromise and fix this. But he's done what I had asked him to do the last time, and that was to change the time and come back with us with something that was shorter and not so much of an open canvas for him to have the entire summer. So he's done actually what you all have asked, too, in the beginning, in regards to the music, and it's acoustic. So I'm just asking you all to give him this opportunity and give him a chance, because I feel that we owe him a chance to be able to make things better and to be a better neighbor. But I still would like you all to sit down and discuss things, because we want it to work, okay? Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bunkrux.
Last one, at least. Well, like I said in the very beginning, I was on the fence about this because of our ordinances. I do like the excitement downtown. They did change some things. This is, to me, this is just a special event permit for a few hours, one month of this whole year. I'm willing to give them a chance and say, okay, if you're in violation of anything to do with our ordinances beyond this, what we're approving tonight, then you're done with me. I don't want to see it again. I'd be so mad, because I think if you do meet, there could be a good compromise. And I know people that have invested their life savings in this place. And I so applaud Mr. Angelotti when he came to, I'm on the Economic Development Committee, and when he came to us and wanted to do this project, everybody on that Economic Development Committee, just like your DDAs and stuff, we were all for it. We were so excited to see something take over that corner that was so awful and unsightly. So I give them a lot of credit for putting all their money. They not only live here, they work here. They make a lot of living here, and that's good, because that's what we want. Everybody that's making money wants to stay here. And that's what we need, businesses that are going to stay. I have really mixed emotions about this, because these residents have been put through hell, literally, for the last six months of wondering what was going to happen down there. And that's why I think you still need to meet and discuss this, give everybody a chance. Because, you know, we're Trenton, and I've lived here my whole life. And we've been a sleepy bedroom wannabe community. We're always looking at Wyandotte and, you know, Sagatuck on the other side of the state and looking everywhere going, wow, what could we be? Why can't we be that? And everywhere I go in Michigan, in these tourist towns, there's excitement. So I can see this, and I know people that have invested, like I said, a lot of money. And so I'm willing to give this a temporary chance, and I hope they prove me right. And I hope the residents can get on board with this and go there, eat, you know, and if the music and stuff bothers you, leave before, you know, leave. I mean, you don't have to stay there that long. But I hope that our police officers also can enforce some of the shenanigans that are going on with the heavy traffic, the parking, the speeding down there. And I'm sure they do their job, so I'm not worried about that. But that's, to me, what a lot of residents are looking for, too, is enforcement. So I'm going to say yes to this tonight, and I hope that we come to a great compromise. And know that, Mark, when you came to us, this was not part of your plan. You didn't have any idea about outdoor music and venues, and you didn't realize that, I think, that this was going to grow into what it did. And it's been better than you thought.
I'm thrilled, though.
I bet. And I bet you are, and I'm proud of you. And I'm proud of what you did for the city of Trenton. I mean, Mr. Paul Beck, myself, you, we're all in the Rotary together, we all. And our Rotary creed is to do what's right and what's fair and make it fair and equitable for all. And that's how we live as Rotarians, and that's how I hope we can live together in this town and have a good compromise, so it's beneficial for all concerned. So that's my thought, and I know, Mark, that's how you feel. And, you know, I understand the residents down there, and I just hope we'll come to a great compromise. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else from council? Nope. Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. All right, thank you. Next up, Madam Clerk, Vintage Market LLC, Lobster Fest/Fall Bash.
All right. The Vintage Market is looking for permission to hold a Lobster Fest Fall Bash to celebrate fall and bring people downtown. This would be on Friday, September 27th, from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. And Saturday, September 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They're looking to approve the road closure of West Jefferson from, let's see, beginning, I'm so sorry, hang on one second. The road closure would be from 11:00 a.m. Friday morning and reopen at midnight on Sunday morning, same as last year.
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. So that was 11:00 a.m. Saturday, correct?
The road closure would begin 11:00 a.m. on Friday.
Oh, got it. Sorry, I jumbled this up here. Okay. All right. We had a motion. I think we had support as well. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously sorted. I don't know if you guys wanted to talk about the event at all by chance? Nope, good, okay.
Same as last year.
Cool. All right. Thank you all. Next up, we go to Department Heads and Officials. We've got two items from our administrator. First up, land swap agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Before council is our land swap agreement, and this relates to DTE. For the people watching or listening, whatever. This, we have a number of properties in town that we use, utilize park space that have been historically owned by DTE or and/or ITC. Also, we have property that surrounds our Also, we have property that surrounds our wastewater plant that is actually very important to us that also was never completely transferred over to city control. And what we have tentatively agreed to is separate the old Dog Pound property at the south end of the DTE property. DTE will take control of the portion there, and the city on the other side will get all the park property as outlined in the package it was given to you. Want to go through the parcel numbers, but they're all the same parcels that we've talked about previously. So the recommended action is resolve that the attached agreement titled Land Swap Agreement is approved and the transfer of properties authorized with the mayor signing the agreement and be further resolved. These agreements may be modified as needed with approval of leave counsel so long as any changes are deemed minor or non-consequential by our legal counsel and be further resolved that the mayor and legal counsel are permitted to approve any fair equitable proration of pending taxes on the property.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Dean, I'll take the next one to Taco Bell of America LLC, Agreement for Maintenance of Stormwater Management System.
Okay, this is another very exciting item. So this is, this agreement is modeled after the one we have with Gibraltar as far as stormwater. It's been reviewed and approved by legal counsel and our engineering department, engineering department. So requesting city council, city councils being requested to adopt a resolution to execute agreement with Taco Bell of America LLC, owner of Taco Bell located at 4484th Street for long-term stormwater facility maintenance, reimbursement of costs incurred by the city, and indemnification, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Next up, we'll go to our DVA Director, Ms. Lucino. Our 2024 Spring/Summer City of Trenton Newsletter.
Okay, this is working. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today I present the agenda item of the 2024 Spring/Summer City of Trenton Newsletter. The idea is to help improve communication to inform private residents on upcoming events and city updates. This newsletter will be mailed directly to residents. The idea is it will be printed through Printwell, and this is kind of through Denver Community Publishing. They do amazing today, but we're just going to be doing an eight-page newsletter. 9,000 copies will be sent out based on the 18,000 population, and then there'll also be 1,000 sent to the city hall where we can have sent out to our community places such as the Canadita News Library for any other non-emergency people that might want to know information about Trenton. The cost for the delivery in post office will be $2,254.42, and the postage is an estimate to be about $1,700. So the project should not exceed $4,000. The newsletter will contain the funneling. The first page will be a nice cover to highlight the topic. A second page will be a letter from our senior mayor, a kind of meeting, a list of all our elected officials so everyone can know who's on our city council, and a phone number contact list for all city buildings, so city halls, county center, non-emergency for fire and police. So all residents will have this information as well. The third and fourth page will be dedicated to a highlight topic. The topic for this one that's planned will be fire and safety. And then the fifth and sixth page will be dedicated to the Parks and Recreation Department to highlight any classes or events they're gonna be having this summer. And then lastly, the seventh page will be downtown events and improvements that we're gonna have with a nice downtown business directory highlighting all our downtown businesses. This will be funded with Civic Development account number. So I hope to present to you to approve the Printwell Hope for 2024 Spring/Summer City of Trenton Newsletter in amount not to exceed $4,000. Any questions?
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Councilwoman Bunkricks, you got a question?
Is this going to be done just for the downtown business, or are you gonna do this throughout the city?
So are you talking about the directory?
The letter.
Are the letter?
The mailing.
The mailing's gonna be 9,000 based on 18, all residents. So it will go to all residents.
Okay. Are you having any kind of ideas? This almost looks like it's gonna take place as a former city calendar type thing. I don't know if you remember the city calendar that we used to pass out or do.
Yeah, so it's gonna just have kind of more updates, a little information. There won't be an actual calendar.
Right.
But it will highlight some events, and it'll be more, it'll be designed by the city so the city can make sure what they want to happen.
Are you considering maybe doing any advertisement to supplement this cost?
So there won't be any advertising business. It's pretty low, and it's only eight pages, but there is potential if we want to grow, we can start doing advertisements that help so we can maybe include more, have more pages, make more information. But this will just kind of be a little bit of a baby step, eight pages, no advertisement, see how the residents like it, and hopefully maybe grow.
Great. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Angelia. All right, next up, Mr. Sargent, DPS Director, request to award bid for paving projects.
Thank you, Mayor. We recently placed three different paving projects out to bid. There are three alleys in the DVA district, Typer Avenue from John R. Trumble and the At Holter Park parking lot. We received three bids, and based on the city engineer's review, Al's Asphalt provided the lowest responsible and responsive bid. Therefore, based on our city engineer's recommendation and seeking authorization to award this contract, the low bidder, Al's Asphalt, a total amount of $308,814.50. Funds are available in the DVA Authority Projects Account, Parks and Facility Capital Project Account, and the Local Streets Capital Projects Account.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin. All right, Mayor Protem Benedetti, I'll kick it over to you for the next couple here, and we'll get started with the non-union pay adjustments.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve an increase of 3% across the board for all non-union and permanent part-time employees as of July 1st, 2024.
Support.
Moved and supported, and this will put things up to parity with our collective bargaining agreements as well here. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. I'll go to the late item we've got, and I'll let you keep it over here for a closed session request. Oops, sorry, I missed that one. Oh, that's okay.
Move to approve a closed study session of council to discuss litigation and potential litigation immediately following a study session tonight, June 3rd, 2024.
Moved and supported for a closed session immediately following tonight's study session. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Cabalotan?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Prudgy?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Bunkrick?
Yes.
Motion here, Mr. Bunkrick.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Councilman, and then I'll let you keep it for the dispersments and statements.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the authorized dispersments for June 3rd, 2024 in amount of $600 at $55,503.50.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, other council business, just a couple quick things for me tonight. Do want to give a big thank you to the Civic Commission, everyone who was able to come out for Memorial Day Parade, got to walk in that. There was, I think, even more people than the last couple of years. The weather was awesome, a really good crowd for the ceremony too. So organizing those things, I know, are a logistical nightmare, so definitely appreciate all the work that goes into it and a really good way to spend Saturday before Memorial Day there too. Two events in the last few days that I was not able to make it to, but want to thank the Cultural Commission for all their work for the Pride event last weekend, and then the VA Clinic ribbon cutting on 4th Street that I was also not able to attend, but I know Councilwoman Rodriguez was there in my stead, and that was a really, really big day. I know the News Herald ran a story on that too, but having the first VA clinic open in the region, opened up right here in Trenton, is a big win for a lot of folks here too. And then just a couple weeks ago since the last meeting, did have another ribbon cutting actually for Budget Fashion, new business that opened up in Trafford Square right by the Secretary of State's office. So I encourage folks to go check that out. That's all I've got for this evening, and so on council, we'll get started with Councilman Benedetti tonight.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. And I guess I would like to add too, to just have folks stick around and keep watching for the study session that we're gonna immediately have after this for the Chief Hawkins, it's gonna lead us on to detail some of the police department needs here too, so we appreciate that. Councilwoman Hornbeck, you're up next here.
I'm just kind of piggybacking what you said. The parade was a great success, I think. Everyone filled the streets. It was really nice to see everybody on a beautiful day. And I did attend the Pride event, and that was well-attended, and I thought it was really nice to see the community come out for that. And graduates did celebrate commencement's over the weekend, so we have, not counting, but I believe we have six wake-ups left until the school year's over, which will be the 11. And that's all I have to say.
Light at the end of the tunnel, right? Well, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Prudgy.
Yes, I'd like to discuss the ribbon cutting for Java Junction. For those who don't know, it's run by RK who has differently-able, excuse me, differently-able adults. They run the facility, they provide food for you running it. It's close to, my heart is, my daughter used to work for RK, now she got into social work because of that, and it's really nice. The manager, or the owner perhaps, her name's Leslie, goes speak to her, have her give you some more information of what really goes on there. It's really great that they chose the city of Trenton to do this. I suggest everybody goes to have breakfast food, they have lunch food. It's great to see that activity in the city. So, and again, I'd like to reiterate to the Rivertown project, I was very sincere when I said I would be glad to meet with those people and honestly orchestrate, I'd be glad to help out.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, thank you for mentioning Java Junction too. I apologize. Glad you were able to make it, that's awesome. Very happy to have them. Councilman Cabalotan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take the liquid easy road. I'll echo everyone else's comments from earlier as well as, again, congratulations to graduates at Trenton High School, and congratulations to, I believe it's the Girl Society team that's advancing to regionals, I think on Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken as well. Other than that, that's all I have for now.
Great, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
You know, Mayor, everyone touched on everything that I was gonna talk about, so I am good this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and Councilwoman Bunkricks?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Other elected officials? Madam Clerk, do you have anything tonight?
I'd like to just remind everybody that our next council meeting will be on Monday, June 17th. It will take place at Fire Station Number One downtown on West Jefferson. There will be a study session to follow the regular meeting as well, and that study session will be, the fire chief will have a presentation on the conditions of building up the fire department. And that's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and just echoing again, we'll be doing the Police Department presentation right after we adjourn this meeting here too, so. Well, thank you. Our assessors, we're not here. All right, thank you. Our treasurer, I know I saw Mr. at some point.
On behalf of Deputy Treasurer Amanda Tekken, myself, by everything's great with the treasurer.
We like to hear it. All the money's there, all right. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Any of our department heads have anything for us this evening here? Everyone's shy now. All right, not seeing anybody. All right, we'll go to public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak, would ask you to begin with your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes and direct all questions through me. We'll go to any folks in person first, then those on the Zoom. So anyone on the Zoom interested, please use the raise hand function, we'll get you queued up from there, so. Mr. Angelotti?
Mark Angelotti, 2933 Riverside Drive, Trenton, Michigan. And I'm hopeful that Stephen, either you or Mr. Creach, might clarify the DVA positions as everybody who's on the DVA must live in the DVA or be a business owner in the DVA, and there's an implicit bias. I don't know all the terminology, but we do have some areas when we're called upon to vote for the distribution of any funds, we are to refuse ourselves, but I don't know all those. I know I'm in a position as the chair to get scrutiny, and I hope you guys can clarify that for the audience, please.
Happily, no, thank you for that. Yes, I think to put it shortly, and I'll let Dean continue on here too, but yeah, any sort of, all of the votes are recorded via roll call. If there was any sort of even perceived conflict of interest, there are abstentions, but there is no in any way, shape, or form financial remuneration for serving on this board for oneself or business interests in any way. And certainly feel very confident in saying that even, you know, there's never even been anything that comes close to bordering on that boundary, so. Dean, if you have anything else to?
I don't have, I don't have much to add. That pretty much rounds out, but we are very cautious to make sure there are no improprieties or anything. You also should know that the DVA, although we appreciate their work, they're, number one, they're not paid, and number two, any financial decision or anything they make is validated by council. So, and they're restricted, the only time they're restricted, actually, the charter encourages the officials to vote unless you have a clear financial gain by doing it, and the DVA is very good about abstaining from anything that would have a direct financial impact. We went through this a couple years ago with our council people who, you know, scrutinize our ethics very, very closely at that time, whatever, and the state law is very, very clear on that, and we have been in full compliance with it. I have no issues, no concerns.
I would also like to accentuate that we are very grateful for individuals that do volunteer for these positions because they can be quite a bit of work, and, yeah, for no bad, yeah. All right, thank you. Mr. Angelotti, any other public comment? Zoom here too. Oh, there?
Hello? My name is Lawrence Hall. I live in the Typer subdivision at 3277 Gator. The alley behind my house into Charles and John is probably a minimum of a foot higher than my backyard. Backyard plugs, garage plugs, all of my neighbors' yard is plugged, and I would like for somebody to be able to take care of a bulb plug in it, so. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Poole. Not, I have to consult with our engineer on that, but not being one myself, but we'll definitely look at that. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Any other public comment?
We have on Elizabeth Drive, on one side, on the west side of Elizabeth Drive, they have signs, permit parking on it, and it's been brought to my attention that one of my neighbors tried to get a sticker for, lives on that side for his vehicle, and was told that that sign is no longer being enforced. I, that, it's interesting that the month, somebody was talking about that tonight over the issue of this tavern, but I was unaware of this. I got a sticker during COVID without any problem, but I just figured I should have one on my two vehicles because I live on the street and should I need to park on that side of the street, it would be illegal. But now I understand that it's not enforced, so, and somebody like just that.
Yeah, it's Chief Hawkins, you have to do this.
Just for a point of reference on those, we are making sure that the city of Trenton follows the manual and uniform travel. follows manual and uniform traffic control devices on everything that we put up to follow the law. So currently, there's an ongoing study by the Traffic Safety Commission regarding all that signage with permit marking on residential streets. They're going to be investigating if there's marking in the back, if there's pads. So any of those questions should be directed right now to the Traffic Safety Commission, which is the first Wednesday of every month at 7:30 at City Hall. But they are looking at that right now.
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, my name is Sherman Rowland. I live at 3257 John Arden Street. And just recently had an alley raided, as you call it. They did a wonderful job, wonderful. But unfortunately, we built it up so high that I have a berm behind my house now that the water can't get out. And my yard was up to my head through that yard. I know intentions are good and I would like to know if it would be possible for the city engineer to come out and maybe give us a suggestion, answer what we could write about the problem, even individually. I have no problem with that. It is nicer to drive up and down. Unfortunately, I have a warning for anybody who comes over when it rains. You're invited. And by the way, I love, I've only been here five years and I'm so happy to see the progress in the city. It was bad when I got here. It seemed empty, like it was life's death and it's growing. See, and we don't like change sometimes, but we gotta, we gotta grow and try, we gotta negotiate. And I just believe that you face the same deal.
Thank you very much.
So just to help with the alley issue and so the city engineer's been out there on a couple of occasions. I've been out there on a couple of occasions. And how this all started was there were a couple of neighbors, and I don't know if it was your address or not or whatever, but there were a couple of neighbors that were upset over the amount of water that was flowing from east to west and was intruding in their yard. We can't do anything about the low spot in those yards. When you drive down it, it's evident. We have probably, I'm guessing, a hundred of those throughout the city where when you were either the first house or wherever the pitch was when they built the neighborhood, that's where the water runs. It's unfortunate, I can't do anything about that. But what we could do and what we did do, we had the engineer come out, we shot it with lasers, got the levels and everything to stop the water that comes from the east and goes to the west because that was exasperating. If you could picture the neighbors behind you, the rain comes down. When the ground is saturated, it won't go in the ground anymore. So it was coming back and going, and I actually have pictures I supplied to council. And it comes right across the alley and was dumping in your yard and making it way, way worse. Correct.
Yes, and that's.
Let me finish, please.
Hang on, hang on.
So we shot the levels and the only solution, the only equitable solution, it was to regrade the alley so that, and it was professionally done, so that the water would come off the east side. I can't, we can't do anything about the water that is, that bowls on your property because you're the lowest ones there. But when the water comes from the east to the west, it comes and it will hit the alley. And as you've seen, those galonage, that is earmarked to go right out both entrances of the alley and go away from the property. So it's not going to alleviate the low spot in your yard because there's nothing that can be done with that. But we've taken the galonage that's east of your, east of your property and put that out where it goes out the alley.
Well, unfortunately, I see, I understand what you're saying. But for me now, I mean, I had, we had some holes in the alley and a hell of a little water. But now, because of that situation, I called it berm, I don't know what it is.
Right.
We've done it lately, called it, and we built it on a berm. But unfortunately, now on the other side with the rains, it's like water has no place to get out. At least it's, it's solid above the water. I could cut through the berm and the water would go out.
Right.
But now it's going into my garage. I don't think that's.
Has that happened since, since the alley was done? It's gone into your garage? Okay.
Yeah, it was right up under my garage door. So, I mean, like I say, I would just like to talk to somebody more experienced, maybe give me some ideas for what I could do.
Yeah, I could re refer back to engineering, but what I can tell you is, is we did, we shot the lasers, the levels.
You guys did a great job.
What you need to understand though is there's limits to what we can do.
Well, maybe you could put more, put it right up on my backyard.
No, see, see if you, if, but if you run the water, if you, if you put any more depth there for as low as your house and your garage are, you're going to push the water right into your garage. It's got nowhere else to go.
Well, all I would like to do is, I'm trying to see, if maybe you could say just certain things that I could do. Somebody said something about, some people have some pumps in their backyard, believe it or not. Okay? And, or maybe I need to put a fresh drain. I don't even know what that is truly. But maybe you could talk to me about that, you know? I'd like to talk to somebody about.
Okay. We'll get, if you could make sure you leave your phone number.
Because I parked in the garage, you know, I had a garage in the alley. I don't have a garage there. But, you know, I'm not supposed to, I'm not saying you guys could, and I lost it for a break. You guys are good.
I just want to set the expectations because there isn't, you had a significant water issue at the back of your property. And the grading that was done, it may be the, it may be the most or the best that can be done short of, because we can't go in and put.
This has to be the solution to the problems on the, you know, some of that.
Yeah, just make sure you leave your phone number with it. We'll make sure that someone will check out with you.
Can I show you a picture of my back gate of the alley?
Do you have a picture of the?
I sent him a picture.
Same one, okay.
Can I, can I show you a picture I took today? For the string line that I measured in the alley is 12 inches higher than my backyard. How do I get rid of my water? How do I get it out of my yard? I know when that subdivision was originally built, that alley was not that hot. Water drained out of our yards into the alley and removed.
We have pictures going back since 2021 that those yards have never drained, have never drained into the alley.
That subdivision was built in the 50s.
Right.
All we have done is added gravel to the alley every time there's a pothole. So therefore, you have created the water issue in my backyard. I know you haven't personally, but throughout the years, the city has created the issue of why I cannot get the water out of my yard. And the solution was to come and add eight inches more gravel to the alley. I understand the water now.
Mr. Paul, I have to wrap up too, because I already gave you one chance to public comment too. So I appreciate it and we will talk to our engineer about this for sure. I can assure you of that. All right, any other public comment? Check out Zoom. All right, not seeing any others. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at nine o'clock PM. Moved and supported. Nobody go anywhere because we're going to start right into the study session at nine o'clock here. Chief Hawkins, feel free to take up to the podium.